We are live.
Good evening. It is Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. It is six thirty P. M. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call the meeting in order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Surely have you had a chance to take rule?
I will take the rule. Everybody is present and you have a call.
All right. The board will move on to the consent agenda this evening. Items of discussion on the consent agenda. If not, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Consent agenda presented. I have no mayor's remarks this evening, so we'll move on to the administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, we received the U. S. Treasury's final rule on our expenditures, and it is good news. They have allowed a standard allowance of up to ten million dollars to be recognized as lost revenue. And what that does is it allows the city to use those expenditures if we claim them as losses on general government services. So government services are literally anything that we can legally spend money on. So that broadens the scope and certainly eases our ability to do our reporting to them on this. So we're pleased that they've done this across the country. Everybody gets to claim that same deduction.
Well, with our delay in the interchange, although it's cost increasing, that'll could be an excellent opportunity for us.
And Mr. Mayor, speaking of the interchange, I want to remind everybody the bid letting is January the twenty-first, which is this Friday, and so be looking to hear from us on if MoDOT will reach out to us and be advising us of how those bids come in. So those are all good news and glad to report it.
Can I conclude your report?
It does, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have no public request or petition. We'll move on to public hearings. We do have two public. Oh, that's right. We added him after the agenda. Sorry, Kurt.
You said you weren't gonna skip over me.
And that's what I do, right? We'll give Kurt Hamilton, our executive, the Carney Richmond Council, the floor. Go ahead, sir.
So thank you for letting me come. I was here a couple of weeks ago to give our annual report. I sent you guys an email talking about we have an annual fundraiser event. We started it last year. We held our first one ever at the Tobacco Barn Farm where we were able to successfully raise about seventy-five hundred dollars for our organization. This year, we decided to move our event downtown as that being one of the pillars of focus for us. And we asked for permission to hold our event on the street with it being closed after some discussion and some feedback from you guys. Instead of asking for that request, we were just going to ask for a request since we're using the Blue Heron space, which is owned by Lisi Saab and across the street. We were hoping that we would still be able to use the alleyway and parts of the sidewalk to be able to have open container and have it as a beer garden for our event, have it enclosed with barriers, of course, but to still be able to serve that. First base can hold a hundred people, so we will be limited in being going back to a hundred people, which is a little disappointing, I'm not gonna lie. But Carney doesn't have room for more than a hundred people inside our city limits, really. We've kind of exhausted our options of looking within our town, and we really don't have a facility that really supports something that we really need, which is an event for more than a hundred people. So as we continue to grow, and I showed you great reports for how we are growing exponentially, I think it's still up to us as a city to find room for our growth as well this fall within our downtown district. So it's something that I would ask for your support on as we continue to mold our community and build something that we're really proud of. We will still need to continue to support our downtown district and our vendors to make sure that things like this we hopefully will be able to do in the future in our town, because we never want to move stuff like this outside of our city limits.
Have you considered Jesse James Park, where there's a big, beautiful pavilion that has adequate parking and
eleven thousand square foot under roof?
Wouldn't have to close a public street?
It's true, but if you imagine ladies getting in their finest dresses and night tight heels and asking the weather to be in April where the weather can still go through those walls pretty easily, it still makes it kind of hard for us to be able to do something like that. The easiest change is to change the time of year that we do the event, but also our plate is quite full with some of the events that we want to do for our community, and we're kind of limited to some of the times where we can actually focus on ourselves and do our own fundraising. So it usually falls back to this April and May period, unfortunately, and we just have to kind of deal with the weather that we were kind of granted. Last year was great. Tobacco Barn Farm is a wonderful facility. It's still located in Holt. We don't get the benefit of it being in our downtown or our own hometown of Carney. So we kind of exhausted all solutions, looking at the Jesse James Pavilion, the Fun Farm Barn, the Church of the Annunciation Hall, all that came to a settling halt, which is why I came to you with this request, doing my due diligence of working first base that would be able to hold as many people. I would entertain an opportunity to possibly use Alliance Park for this opportunity where we could possibly use the firehouse as an indoor facility with the park and maybe do some of the ideas that we had with a tent in the future and do the same kind of beer garden idea. But it's still a private usage for one of our public parks, so I feel like the discussion would kind of go back to the same of a street. But again, I think it's up to us to kind of work together to find an opportunity where we won't be able to grow this event past a hundred people, which is making it a more secluded event, which is a really disappointing opportunity. As we have hit over twenty, forty thousand people that we're hitting with our events, it's pretty sad to only be able to invite a hundred people that support us to a get together like this, which is why I think it's important that I was able to come and speak on that. But like I said, my ask tonight would be that you would help me and support me with letting us use the alleyway, which is something that not a lot of people are using in that night on April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, so we could use that as part of our extension, so we'd be able to hopefully have a hundred people still comfortably at our event.
Any questions or discussion from the board on the
I personally am thrilled to think that you will take advantage of our new Washington Street walkway and is it or what it was meant to be used for, a variety of things, and I think this is a good use of that space.
Me too. I'm a big fan of what you do and helping you with that. Yeah, I'd like to have some discussions on where we can make it bigger for you, if not this year, another time, because I do think that we need to get you past that hundred people.
Yep.
Am I the only person on the board that has an issue closing the street down for a private event?
No.
Because I don't want to direct the board individually by any means.
My concern would be it's a Friday night, and so you've got some restaurants in the area, and you're asking them to really curtail their business for the evening, so that was a concern for me. I don't know if there's any, like, the parking lot where the school district, you know, where we have the farmer's market, if that is a bigger area for you, if that would work. But in the meantime, this, I like this idea. I like the idea of using the walkway. But I think we're all committed to finding something that will allow you guys to expand.
But what about that alley behind there as well?
I think I'm fine with shutting down the alley.
Yeah, me too, if they wouldn't have the alleyway.
You could barricade off the alley.
I will say, I honor your opinion with the businesses. We did talk to Gino's and Fat Boys. We planned on using Fat Boys as part of our alcohol and Gino's as part of our appetizers. Both businesses having new management in the past few years, they're very receptive of the ideas that we have, and no business that we went and talked to in Washington would mind. We did move into it Saturday instead of a Friday. That way we wouldn't mess with anybody's times if we did close the street. But none of the businesses that we spoke to in person had any problems with what we were doing. But I do appreciate the idea of possibly using it in the back alleyway, if that is plausible.
I don't see a problem with using the back alleyway at all. Close it off and walk in.
Old Church Plaza and all that.
Much more comfortable with that than the street because of this being a private event. We would be setting a precedent, and then we'll end up with all kinds of people saying, well, you've hosted a private event and closed your street for it.
Right.
So.
No, I think the points that you brought up were very valid, and that's why we want to talk about compromise instead of, you know, we don't, we came to you with an idea. It wasn't our solidify factor. We just, we're looking for a way to still be able to host our event for our community.
Yeah. You know, that back alley is really a glorified utility easement. You don't see too much real traffic going through there that's causing a problem. I guess it's a road, but we cut it just a back alley.
Right.
So I would have no problem if you wanted to use the back alley and block off both ends or whatever.
Great.
There's also that parking area up on the east end of the alley there by Grove Street that you might be able to use part of that too for the tent.
That's private property, that little park that
Is it?
It's private property, that's right.
Or Newey.
Yeah. Kurt, are you, you're looking for approval this evening, seeing what you're planning, I assume? So Jim, the simple majority, simple motion by the board to have
Yeah, actually, just a unanimous consent of this, and I can put a formal request for the liquor on an upcoming agenda, but you guys are gonna approve it. So it ought to be a formality.
Entertain a motion to approve their request to utilize the Washington Street walkway in the alley behind for the
Make a motion to approve the Washington Street walkway and the attached alley behind for the
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Yep, thank you for letting me.
Yep.
Now, on to public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, public hearing has been scheduled to consider a rezoning application submitted by Mr. Brian Mertz, P. C. Homes, as represented by Patricia Jensen, Ralph's P. C., which is a law firm, to rezone approximately thirty-two acres from general commercial and industrial to C. P. Commercial Plan District, R. P. Three Medium Density Presidential Plan District and R. P. Four High Density Planned District on property located on the north side of Ninety-two Highway at Bennett Boulevard. Public hearing was held on December the thirteenth and tabled for additional information submitted for consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they considered at their, which they did consider at their January tenth meeting, and a motion was made to recommend approval. It was considered, but it did not pass by a vote of one to five, and the minutes of that meeting are enclosed. After the hearing tonight, it is recommended the board consider a proposed ordinance, and it didn't make the agenda packet, but we do have copies of that available, and they're right here. They're on your desk up front. So with that, Mr. Mayor, you can call for staff comments from David Pavlich, who's online, or
Yeah, I'll call staff comments from David Pavlich, and we'll follow up with our and he has on Kathy Barker.
Okay.
Pavlich, you have the floor.
Hi, board. Thanks. Sorry I couldn't be there with you tonight. Thanks for letting me join by Zoom today. We had a planning and zoning meeting last week for the Carney Crossing project. Since that time, I do want to point out to you some, a little bit extra information. One of their requests was to increase the maximum building height for the apartments from forty to forty-two feet. Patricia Jensen and their architect looked at our deficient, the definition of building height, compared that to their plans, and the way Ashley Reed, you take the average height between the roof plate and the ridge of the roof, not to the peak, I'm sorry, peak, roof peak. It's not measured from the peak of the roof, so you get an average in between, and that's where that height is measured. And their proposed buildings would be below our forty-foot maximum height requirement. So the only variation from our standard zoning, as part of their request, would be a reduction in the landscape buffer between the south side of their townhomes and the north side of their proposed commercial lots that are on the west side of Bennett Boulevard. The ordinance that was provided should show a strike through on the last page that identifies that that building height requirement would not be necessary as part of an ordinance for your consideration. At the last meeting, we actually met in December. Based on comments at that December meeting, they made some changes to their plan to increase setbacks for the apartments and for their townhomes and for their commercial properties. They also reduced the number of units in the apartment complex from two-hundred-and-forty to two-hundred-and-sixteen units to help that area fit better on the plan. Some other changes that they made were to make some intersection improvements at Bennett Boulevard and Ninety-two Highway. So we would see some traffic improvements, also a westbound right turn lane onto Bennett Boulevard from Ninety-two Highway. So they were, they took into consideration some of the board's concerns of traffic moving in December. Sorry, we got interrupted there. They also increased the number of parking spaces so that they met our standard ordinances. I wanted to point those changes out to you guys today. I think Patricia and Brian Mertz are in the audience, and they have a presentation to give to the board today before that public hearing is open.
Kathy, do you have any comment on planning design?
I hope all of you were able to read through the minutes, but I think the highlights, the sticking points for most of the board was the traffic. Current with one way in and only one way in, I think there were some traffic concerns. I know kind of as aside, we've adjusted those lights, and now I hear complaining about we've adjusted the lights. So anyway, that we don't have the infrastructure perhaps to hold, to take care of that. And then the fact that the master plan has this area zoned commercial and industrial, and the master plan's only five years old, so there were concerns about whether or not to allow residential inside an industrial park.
Okay. This time, Ms. Jensen, I'll have to give you and the applicant the floor.
I'm gonna wrap that.
There you go, Patricia.
Members of the mayor and members of board, my name is Patricia Jensen with the Rockford Law Firm, with offices located at forty-five ten Bellevue in Kansas City. And with me is Mr. Brian Mertz, who is P. C. Homes and is the applicant in this matter. We're gonna go through a PowerPoint. Brian's gonna lead off. I'm gonna go into the middle of it, and then Brian's gonna finish it up. So with that, I'll have Brian talk about the beginning part of the PowerPoint.
I'll listen up for me.
To advance that.
Screw this up. So yeah, my name is Brian Marks. I'm just from the introduction. We did meet in December. We did ask to table it with some of the concerns that were brought by the planning and zoning at that time. We did come back last week, and we got a one to five no vote for the project. What I'm hoping in this presentation is to address some of those concerns that planning and zoning have we're going to make, ask for ultimate to make an impactful decision with the city of Carney today on a fifty-million-dollar-plus investment. So this is about thirty-two acres. We're looking at two-hundred-and-sixteen apartment units, ninety-six townhouse units, thirty-seven thousand of commercial, and almost fifty-five of mini storage. So one of the things that is driving this is Carney's growth, housing needs, and lack of housing supply. So we're gonna use the comp plan that's in reference and go through what the comp plan says and why we think it supports this project. And I'm an outsider to this. I said this back in December. I'm the outsider here. This is your eyes, this community. A lot of you probably grew up here. So all we were trying to be is sponges throughout this process and delivering you what I think the city needs and what Carney's been consistently been one of the fastest-growing cities in the state of Missouri. I think twenty-twenty census has you over eleven thousand people. When the comp plan was done in two thousand and sixteen, that wasn't done overnight. That was started probably in two thousand and fifteen, which we'll get into in this presentation. You guys were growing at one percent, so some of your projections have changed in that short amount of previous time. So these are just excerpts that we're using from the comp plan. It references that you are the fastest, one of the fastest-growing cities in Kansas City. Some of your expectations of growing at one percent. In your comp plan, you gotta look at three different scenarios. On with scenario A, labeled business as usual. On with scenario B, and then C. And that's called, or imagine, reimagine what your comp plan is gonna look like if you hit these growth rates. You guys went for scenario B reinvest, and that assumed a two-point-seven-five-percent growth rate. We're gonna see here where that, if scenario B was maintained, that was projected about sixteen thousand people by twenty-three. So if we said, okay, we're two-point-seven-five-percent growth rate, this is what we need for housing stock by twenty-thirty-five. You need to add one-hundred-and-thirty-one townhouses. You need to add two-hundred-and-sixty-two apartments. Then they said, well, to give everybody competitive time, you hit that times two, and then here's the acreage you need. Be four acres, multi-family was thirty-four acres. So this is straight from the comp plan from two thousand and sixteen, at a two-point-seven-five-percent growth rate. But your actual growth rate far exceeds even what your wildest dreams were in two thousand and sixteen, at three-point-five percent. You've been averaging three-point-seven percent. And that's depicted here with your current population and your annual growth rates in the comp plan. That averages three-point-seven. But yeah, the comp plan should be relied on, but it's already been outdated by you guys, being the fastest-growing cities in Missouri. So I think we need to revisit this. So here's the chart, assuming the different scenarios used on the comp plan. So on the left-hand side, scenario B, that was what was adopted by the comp plan, based on kind of a middle-of-the-road approach. Talks about the acreage needed. It's down here on the bottom. Townhomes, acreage needed. And then if you revise it with three-point-seven percent on your current tract, here's your difference. You need fifty-eight more townhouse units than what was contemplated in two thousand and sixteen, based off your middle-of-the-road approach. And you need a hundred-and-fourteen more units of multi-family. So then you come down here on the acreage. You need nineteen more acres and fifteen more acres respectively of those housing stocks. So my project alone does not fit the needs of where you guys are at right now. You're already behind the eight ball on this. You guys have not added new multi-family in the last fifteen years. Think about that. You're already behind the eight ball. There's no other multi-family projects in the hopper except for ours. Just something to think about on how this comp plan is, you know, hindsight twenty-twenty is great in this, right? Looking at this, but a lot has happened in your town in six years. Okay, so look at this. In accounts, provided by the comp plan's ninety-six. Needed based on three-point-seven growth. Again, we're just kind of rehashing the numbers. So even with my project in the middle, you're still short this. There's room in the sandbox of Carney, Missouri for another developer to build a multi-family project here. You know, I was approached by a developer, and they said, you wanna be partners on the project? I said, no. How do you feel about two projects in Carney, Missouri? I said, I'm bullish on multi-family in Carney. Can these numbers prove it out? You guys need multi-family. And here's your shortfall. If you do a search on apartments dot com, it's a website used a lot by renters. Yes, six results, all single-family. That's with no filter. That's, go to apartments dot com and you look for rental. This is what you get. Average rental rate is one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. Median income for resident Carney is thirty-eight thousand dollars. National average is you take thirty-three percent of that income, and that's what people spend on their housing. So you extrapolate that, you do the math. Single person at thirty-eight thousand or a household of thirty-eight thousand, they should be spending a thousand forty-five a month. So your citizens are, on average, making a thousand, thirty-eight thousand. Shouldn't mean they're gonna spend a thousand forty-five a month. This is your average. You're outpricing what your citizens can afford.
What you tried to parrot.
So this is where that search comes out to be. All of them on the east side about thirty-five. So same list at the top, and then my proposed project runs. One-bedroom apartments, nine fifty, bedroom eleven hundred, and our townhome, smaller unit starting at fourteen fifty. This project meets the needs of your citizens based on the income levels currently. One other thing, the comp plan talks about the missing middle. Housing choice for a community for all ages. You can read the highlights. Talks about the country has kind of lost its way. We used to build duplexes apartments. That kind of went away. Everybody was focused on single-family. It's, that phenomenon's shifted. It's time for multi-family again. During the last fifteen years when we weren't building multi-family, lost out on that swing and that inventory stock. Another slide from the comp plan. Rental housing needed not just for the population growth, but for changes in consumer behavior and trends. We hear a lot about renters are by choice. This is almost renters by necessity. If your new housing stock is outpriced, and it's not, there's no one to blame. I mean, that's just where we're at in this world. This is an article two weeks ago in the Kansas City Star. Average cost of new home in Kansas City surpasses a half a million dollars. Now, when I graduated college, there was no way I could have spent five hundred thousand on a new house. I don't know if I was thirty-five, I could spend, if I was forty-five. I mean, that is a luxury. Five hundred thousand on a new house. So yeah, half a million dollar homes, if I came in here and So yeah, half a million dollar homes, if I came in here and I said I want to do the subdivision for half a million dollar homes, you guys would be great. That doesn't solve the need of your citizens. One of the things we heard at the end of the planning zoning was, we need this product, just not here. Where are we going to put it? Where are there other sites in Kearney than comparable scale acreage with current infrastructure and utilities and access? So we, I just took some, I went through, found open tracksogram. All great tracks. All serviceable for what this product is. But I don't know if they're ready to go today. And I don't, I don't think that if this project goes in on Bennett Boulevard. These other projects can't happen either because we're already behind the eight ball. What do Kearney residents want? The social media, you know. About that, but. This is from the 2015 Stakeholder Survey. What are some of the pressing issues? In Kearney, maybe address issues of congestion near the pilot or High 35. Patricia's going to get up here and she's going to go through some things regarding why we think this project can be zoned. And I'm going to stand back up and I want to talk about the traffic study. I'll talk about the traffic pattern. We think we solved this issue. What should not change, Brian? Good housing mix of housing types and price points. We just need more of it. Our project brings you more housing types and price points. And quality housing and price points. If you could live anywhere other than Kearney, where would it be and why? Leewood, Kansas. I don't know. We need a variety of housing choices to allow teachers to live here in town. This is where we start outpricing the collar workers, young professionals. That's why this housing stock I believe is needed. And then there's something I'm hearing about manufacturing. Look at other service areas. Another service area is when you need other kinds of housing stuff. What should your goals for housing be in Kearney? We need starter homes. It's impossible to build a quote-unquote starter home. We saw that in that previous slide where the average new house is a half a million dollars. It's no fault of the builders or developers or doing single-family lots. It's just costs. Whether it be labor, shipping, anything, it's just more expensive. Apartments are needed. What are these? Need to understand who they are serving. For serving your population. Will that be old, downsizing, ex-incomes? Trying to get out of their half million plus house? Or if it's a young professional? Graduated from college, maybe they're working in the city. Want to live by mom and dad.
Mr. Merz, our moderator's asking if you can maybe try to speak a little louder. They're having a hard time hearing you online.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Need to attract quality contractors to build quality housing. I think that's something I do very well. I don't shop around, but we don't go for the lowest bid. We go for the best contractor. Who gives the best product. Do it after 15 years, same subs for that long. And also, need new housing style ranges from 200 to 300. That doesn't exist. Also duplexes, quadplexes, high-yield features. Living complexes can be taken in a positive way. I think my project can do all that. And I think that fits the comp plan from 2016. I'm going to pass this off to Patricia for a little bit, then I'll come back, talk about the big subject of traffic.
Thank you, Brian. You won't have a problem hearing me. At least that was what my mother used to say. So now that you see as a whole what your comp plan says, rather than just one limited page. You really need to consider the totality of the comp plan. And the comp plan, as I will remind you, is really a guideline. And I think Brian has set forth why we believe that the comp plan, although good back in 2016. Failed with regards to the projections because you guys have grown at a much greater rate. So what we've got in front of Kearney Crossing, and I'm going to give you the facts of that. Is a very good mixed-use product. And as David has said, our plan is for the 216 apartment units. And we meet all of your requirements except for one. And that really deals with the, the landscape buffer between the townhouses and the adjacent commercial. We just meet, we don't meet the width, but we will meet what is required to be planted for the total buffer area. And you'll see our original plans on the left-hand side of the screen, which were filed with the city on November 12th. And the revised plans that were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So you can see what we've done in terms of addressing all of the issues. You know the site well. I don't really have to identify that for you. This is an aerial of our project boundaries. I would note that the industrial zoning goes all the way north, right adjacent to the single-family subdivision. So we've heard how industrial and single-family uses don't mix. Well, you already have it. And we certainly believe that they can be conducive right next to each other. I was just losing my screen. We believe our project satisfies all your review criteria that's contained in your code. This is a list of the review criteria from section 405.120. I'm going to go over those individually for you. Subsection A require, it says, the uses, the existing uses of the subject property and uses of adjacent and near properties. You can see here on the screen that you have a wide variety of uses. You've got office, you have automotive, warehousing and distribution. You have single-family. You have, of course, the pilot that we talk about. There's restaurant, retail and automotive. Right to the west of our site is office. So there are a wide variety of uses around us. The current zoning of the subject property and adjacent or nearby properties. Again, there is a wide variety of zoning districts around our site. The extent to which property values are diminished by the present zoning restrictions. This slide sets out, we've taken some parcels. It sets out the value of their, of their property. And it compares it to our property. And the result is that we have concluded that the increase in the market value would be something about $2.7 million over the existing property values. The next criteria is the extent to which the restrictions diminishing property values promote health, safety morals, or general welfare of the public. We believe that the proposed commercial zoning is consistent with the existing zoning. There are no restrictions on this portion of the project that impact the public welfare. The restrictions on the industrial-zoned portion of this property diminish the general welfare of the public because the property has not developed under its current zoning. The traffic issues that Brian's going to talk about at 92 and Bennett will remain unresolved until a suitable development proposal for this property is approved. And who knows when that will be? This is the one chance to solve some of those problems. And again, as Brian, Brian has identified, it's been 15 years since a non-senior living multi-family product has been built in Kearney. And you know what your citizens are asking. You know what the demand is. And this starts solving that problem. It doesn't totally solve that problem because it leaves room for more multi-family development in Kearney. The next criteria is the relative gain to the public compared to the extent of the hardship imposed upon the individual property owner. We do not believe that the public gains by preserving the existing industrial zoning district when there hasn't been a market for this product in over two decades. And the immediate need in Kearney is for multi-family units. Again, we took a snippet from the staff report that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And this shows the last time that, that apartments were approved. And then this slide talks about the suitability of the subject property to the proposed zoning classification. And we compared our original plans and the requests we were making for deviations compared to the plans we submitted at the beginning of January. And we only have one deviation request at this point in time. We believe we've done everything to comply with the code. The next slide talks about the suitability of the subject property to the proposed zoning classification. We do not believe that the subject property is suitable for the proposed industrial zoning because of the grading, grading of natural slopes caused, caused the loss of the developable area. And we've done some projections. We've looked at a concept plan of, okay, if this property had to be developed as an industrial site, which I'm not sure you would want that as your front door into Kearney, what could you do? And it would support a single 125,000 square foot building. The history of the use of the subject property, considered in the context of the land development in the vicinity of the property. The area, as we've highlighted on that slide, that area has developed with residential uses abutting the industrial, the recommendation in the land use plan for industrial uses. And there's again, a wide variety of uses surrounding our site. The conformity with the Kearney Comprehensive Plan, this is the plan that you'll hear, I'm sure, from the opposition that says it's recommended for the industrial uses. It's also the sheet that shows that Kearney itself recognizes that residential uses can exist next to industrial uses. Again, there's other, there are other planning documents. The code talks about the comprehensive plan, but it also says, or other planning documents. And if you look at the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, it identified this area as being highly susceptible to a change in future use. So that's directly from the comp plan itself. Other planning documents in Kearney that we reviewed is, there was 2008 update to the master plan. It called for big box retail and residential at the site with the residential to the north. The Comprehensive Plan is not a static document and it's recognized, it directly states that in the Comprehensive Plan itself. So you can see that it says it's a flexible guide and one that responds to changing needs and conditions. And we believe that the changing needs and conditions are the evidence of the growth of Kearney itself. And the comp plan also talks about increasing the variety of housing options for residents. You don't have that currently, but you will with our plan and with any other plan that comes forward to meet the need. It won't change. The capacity to provide adequate public services, facilities and utilities to accommodate the proposed development. We've gone through stormwater reports. We've gone through traffic reports, streets, sidewalks, water, sanitary. All of those services exist at the site and are adequate to serve our development. The extent to which appropriate transportation design and access is provided given the existing and planned roadway capacity. I'm going to let Brian at this point talk about what we've talked about with not only your engineers, but also the MoDOT engineers that control 92 and Bennett.
Thanks, Patricia. So before I start on, on this slide, I just wanted to recap something that Alderman-Marger brought up regarding the Bennett and 92 intersection. So when I stood up here last week, one of the things, MoDOT, when we were going through this process, that came to light is the light is not working correctly at Bennett and 92. So it's supposed to go for 45 seconds allowing trucks to get off Bennett because we've seen the videos of the backup that it causes in the morning with trucks. It's supposed to be 45 seconds. It was only doing 30 seconds, which was not allowing the traffic to get off Bennett onto 92 and get on the highway and out of here. So that was one of the things that was found. Well, on social media a couple of days ago, I saw a thing where it's like, this, this intersection is all screwed up. And I was like, oh, what did we do? So I spent some time out here the last couple of days. It's a nightmare. It, I mean, I was telling Patricia before I got up here, it's bad. It's really bad if you're on Bennett. But when we brought that to MoDOT's attention yesterday, they said, yeah. And this is a direct quote from Mr. Martinez. So the detection apparently failed a couple of weeks ago at Bennett and the signal shop was made aware of it about last week. We'll see what we can do to minimize the impact, but in telestix, all movements are potentially impacted. Not my fault. That's what I'm trying to say. It's not my fault. But anyways, I mean, MoDOT is aware of it and I'm sure some citizens have, have expressed some concerns. It's warranted. It's bad. All right. So back to where we were. You know, we have a lot of dialogue with, with city third-party engineers. Sometimes it frustrates the heck out of me, but it's all for the common good. And one of those was, you guys need to get, even though we had a traffic study, our traffic engineer, Janelle Clayton's here. We had to get the final blessing from MoDOT on this before we move forward. So on January 5th, this is just an email excerpt. MoDOT is comfortable with the following items in design and the team can move forward with the city planning process. So there's a list of all the things that MoDOT said we're okay with. MoDOT is okay. MoDOT is okay. MoDOT agrees. Okay? Well, that's MoDOT's standpoint. The next day on January 6th, they were meeting with city engineers. And out of that came two options. Regardless of the option, the infrastructure has to be improved by me on Bennett Boulevard. So that's, right now, your two lanes coming south and one going north on Bennett. Currently, there's a left turn lane on Bennett that'll put you going eastbound 92. And there's a through lane or a right turn, which will put you going west on 92. And there's one lane that goes north off 92. So that's the current situation out there. The left turn lane that puts you going eastbound 92 is not long enough. It does not allow for enough stacking of trucks or cars or anything right now. So that's part of our problem because once that gets full, cars can't pass on the right and either go straight or take westbound 92. So that's, that's the issues that we have to deal with. So MoDOT and city experts, engineers came up with two options. Option one, and I'll go through a little, go back and forth on the slide a little bit. Option one is a southbound approach where you have one southbound, one southbound left turn lane, one southbound through lane, okay, so that kind of exists right now, and then adding one southbound right turn lane. So instead of three lanes total, you have four lanes total, that intersection on Bennett. All three lanes extend full width back to the commercial driveway. Commercial driveway is up here. That's the entrance into our development, first entrance. A lot of talk about how we don't have enough entrances into our development. We've got a lot of entrances to our development, I feel like. This is the major one, 92 and Bennett. If you come in our first entrance to the commercial area and to the townhome section, right here, that is 360 feet from the intersection of Bennett and 92. In that option one scenario, that allows for 340 feet of queuing, the stacking in this left turn lane. We don't currently have that right now. Tapers off right now. That dark gray is us adding four lanes wide, all the way up to our first entrance. So if people are coming, they can take a right into this commercial area and continue straight to our other entrance of our development, or they can take a left into this commercial When they leave, there's that one left lane currently there, just gets deeper for queuing. Current lane would be a through lane, or a new lane, this dark gray one, is a right turn only lane. It puts people westbound 92. Now, our traffic study says 20% of our people that use this development will go west. Not very many people, still accommodated for with a westbound lane only. So that was option one. Now, the infrastructure's in place here, right? Infrastructure hasn't changed, we're still putting it all in. Option two, though, if the traffic warrants it, and that's where MoDOT kind of says, is, option two, if it's warranted, we can do this work because, Brian, you already put all the infrastructure in. This is a matter of restriping roads. So here we have two southbound left turn lanes. One southbound shared through and right lane. So this is really getting the traffic out of here. You have two designated left turn lanes. So much so that two tractor trailers could make this turn simultaneous. This new lane, instead of a right only, is now a right turn and through lane. Again, all the infrastructure's in place with the development. This, this traffic will handle future growth north of our site. It will handle the growth of innovations and handle the growth of Mr. Robertson's Our last code section, I'll take that from Patricia. "To the extent in which rezoning will not result in adverse impacts on the natural environment, including air, water, noise, stormwater management, wildlife, and vegetation, or such impacts will be substantially mitigated." So we've already hired, we've already done our study of the site. We have a wetland that's in the middle, that's part of our detention. We don't plan on bulldozing that over. We've got some minor tributaries, you know, 100 feet here, 70 feet here. All of that's been identified. We've applied for our 404 permit. Doing it the right way, we've already taken it. So we think we've handled this. The site is much more nature-friendly than industrial. And this is our elevations of our apartments. Existing townhomes in Parkville that we're planning on doing here. That's the end of our presentation. I just want to ask some questions. I just thank you for your time. I know it's, it might be a hard decision for some people, but I think it's an impactful decision for the city of Kearney, and I think our product and housing type is needed, needed now.
Thank you. At this time, we will open the floor for public input. If you are for or against the proposed development by the applicant, I'm going to ask you to step forward, state your name and address for the record. I'm going to open the floor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, good evening. For the record, my name is John Rowe. I'm an attorney with the Rowe Law Firm. My address is 4444 North Bellevue, Suite 208, Kansas City, Missouri. I'm here tonight on behalf of Star Development Corporation and Robertson Properties, Inc. Those are two entities that are adjoining or nearby landowners, and they are opposed to this application. I would make a point that what is before you tonight is really a land use decision on this specific 32-acre piece of property. And what you've heard from the applicant tonight is a lot of generalities about need for apartments, but not at this location. And so it's interesting that, at the first public hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the applicant never even mentioned these 10 review criteria that we need to address tonight. I did, on behalf of my clients, to show that those review criteria were not met. It was only at the second meeting, where there wasn't a public hearing, where the applicant had decided to try and address these criteria, and again, here tonight. So what I'd like to do is go through those criteria, because those criteria clearly show that this application should be turned down. And while there are 10 of them, since a lot of time was spent on the Comprehensive Plan, I'd like to start with criteria number eight, which is, the conformity with the Kearney Comprehensive Plan or other planning documents. The future land use map in the Comprehensive Plan shows the entirety of the subject property in purple, which is industrial in your land use map. Therefore, the Kearney Crossing application for rezoning in concept plan is simply not in conformity with the Kearney Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan and the future land use map shouldn't be disregarded lightly. You've heard here tonight, oh, it's just a guide. No, there was a lot of, lot of public input, a lot of time spent. Come up with a plan that's supposed to be your vision for the next 20 years, and we're only in the first five years of that, and now they want to deviate in a major way from it. Let's just look at what some of the text of the land use plan says. Right up front, page two, land use framework. Quote, "The use of land is a significant part of the community's vision for the future. This framework element of the Comprehensive Plan serves as the basis by which the city will make land use decisions." Well, there you have it, right up front. You've got a future land use map that says this property, that's the subject of this application, should be industrial, and they want to put multifamily there. Page two also goes on to say, "This framework or blueprint identifies a long-range development strategy to guide decision-making, zoning changes, future land uses, and redevelopment and development opportunities. It defines where and how future development is to occur. The elements of this framework will help facilitate the desired growth pattern for Kearney to grow gracefully." We're talking about a growth pattern. You folks adopted a plan that had a growth pattern where this property, that's the subject of this application, says it ought to be industrial. And you're already putting your innovation business park all around it. So this area is developing as industrial. Page 106, the map, referring to the future land use map, is an idealized picture of how the land use pattern of Kearney should unfold in the future. Each land use decision must be evaluated against the map, as well as the plan's goals and policies. In your land use framework, you have a preferred direction map, 2016. That map shows the subject property as an employment industrial area. Apartments and townhomes are contrary to this preferred direction map. Page 87, "Future land use is the foundation of the Comprehensive Plan. It forms the basis for policies on development and redevelopment. Therefore, it must represent the best practices available to decision-makers and complement planning goals, strategies, and statements in the plan. Future land use map is used along with the plan's written strategies and policies to help guide future decision-making." The future land use map plan simply doesn't show multifamily in this area. And while we're mentioning multifamily, let's talk a little bit about density. Here's what your Comprehensive Plan says about multifamily. "Multifamily residential accommodates attached residential development, duplex, apartment, and some condo dwellings, which may be intermixed throughout the neighborhood. Net density may be lower in locations where land is severely restricted by slopes or other significant natural features. Density, four to 16 units per acre. Height, one to three stories." That's on page 89. When you look at this plan and do the math, you've got, I think, 216 apartments on nine acres, that's 24 units to the acre. Your map, your plan says density, four to 16 units per acre. Here's what your plan says about industrial land use designation. "Industrial district uses generally include manufacturing, warehousing, wholesale, and industrial uses. Since this use category is intended to promote the economic viability of manufacturing and industrial uses and encourage employment growth, residential uses are prohibited and other non-residential uses are restricted." That's page 91 of your plan. And they want to put residential multifamily there. Here's what your plan says about multifamily. "Multifamily housing, new multifamily development patterns include freestanding concentrations of apartments, townhomes, duplexes, and other similar multifamily uses. They should be encouraged to locate near major employment centers and within easy access to arterial roadways." Your major employment center's on the east side of I-35, not the west side, but that's where they want to go, because that's the lowest hanging fruit. And then there's other, other policies in there about truck traffic should be routed on major arterials and avoid residential areas as much as possible. But they, they want you to approve a plan that dumps all of their residential traffic on the same Bennett Boulevard where all the trucks from the pilot truck stop use. So again, lots of things in your plan that militate against this application. So let's go back and look at some of these other criteria. The existing uses of the subject property and uses of adjacent and nearby properties, near properties. The uses of adjacent property militate in favor of a denial of the rezoning request for townhomes and apartments. Directly to the east is the pilot truck stop. It generates a tremendous amount of truck traffic that uses Bennett Boulevard. And putting, putting that residential traffic and intermixing it with 18-wheel truck traffic, that's highly incompatible. Trucks have what they call no zones, places where they can't see. But we want to take this residential car traffic and dump it onto Bennett Boulevard where all the truck traffic is. Second one, the current zoning of the subject property and adjacent or nearby properties. The zoning of the subject property is commercial along the 92 Highway frontage, and the rest of it is zoned industrial. Robertson Properties owns property that adjoins on the north and east of the subject property. It's zoned industrial. Other property owned by Star Development, zoned commercial on the south side of 92. So when you look at the zoning of the property and nearby property, it's commercial and industrial, not residential apartments, townhomes. So that criteria militates against this application. Couple of things that are interesting that should be noted in connection with this, criteria number two. The purpose of the M Industrial District, this is out of your ordinance, 405.500. "The industrial district is intended primarily for production, processing, and assembly plants that are operated so that they create limited environmental problems in the way of sounds, smoke, vibrations, noise, odor, dust, and glare of such operations and are completely confined with an enclosed building." "The industrial district is also intended for the development of office warehouse uses." Now, get this. "The district is established for industrial uses, which do not require large amounts of land, generate moderate amounts of traffic, are consistent with the capacity and availability of public and private services, and do not permit the intermixing of residential uses." Property owned by Robertson Properties on the east is zoned industrial. The applicant should not be allowed to rezone an area of the subject property for apartments and townhomes, because that would run afoul of existing industrial zoning, which says you don't intermix these uses. A point that was made during the P&amp;Z hearings, you let these apartments and townhomes go in on the subject property, then when someone who has industrial property wants to come in and develop industrially, you have people that are going to be coming here to you saying, you can't put industrial in my backyard, this is where I live. And that, and we don't want to do that. Number three, the extent to which the property values are diminished by the present zoning restrictions. At the December 13 hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I turned in an Exhibit A, which showed that the property value of the subject property and the vast majority of the surrounding properties have stayed the same or increased from 2020 to 2021, according to the Clay County Assessor. So again, let's go back, the extent to which the property values are diminished by the present zoning restrictions. Present zoning is industrial, and the property value has stayed the same. Adjoining property has either stayed the same or gone up in value, so they don't meet this criteria either. But what they want to do is they want to come in here and kind of dangle a shiny project and use a big number, you know, 2.7 million, see what we're going to do? That's not the criteria. What's going on with the property values in relation to the zoning restrictions? Four, the extent to which the restrictions diminishing property values promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the public. Restrictions don't diminish property values. The restrictions that are in place, values are staying the same or going up, so there's no damage to the general welfare. The applicant has argued that the public welfare is hurt because the property hasn't developed and traffic issues will remain. Well, there might be other reasons why the property hasn't developed. You haven't been given any information for that. Maybe the property is not for sale for a period of time. Maybe it was for sale at a price that was too high. Maybe there were financing problems, speculation, or other development problems. So they haven't proven that they've met this criteria. And with regard to traffic issues, we've heard information again tonight about how the signal at 92 and Bennett is supposed to be operating at 45 seconds, but it's operating at 30 seconds. Well, you know what? You don't need this project to fix that. MoDOT's now aware of that. If it hasn't already been adjusted, adjusted, but you don't need to rezone this property, contrary to your Comprehensive Plan, to fix a signalization timing issue. But that's what they want to make it sound like. But that's what they want to make it sound like. Five. The relative gain to the public compared to the extent of hardship imposed upon the individual property. So this is kind of a balancing test here. Is there a gain to the public if you turn this application down? Or is there a hardship to the applicant if you turn the application down? Well, there's no hardship to the applicant. The applicant's a potential buyer of the subject property, and he has it under contract contingent on getting his approvals. So if he doesn't get his approvals, he gets out of the contract and moves on to another location. But there's no hardship to the applicant turning him down. Is there a gain to the public if you turn it down? Sure. The gain to the public in denying the application is because you're maintaining the integrity of the comprehensive plan, in particular, the future land use map that folks worked on and is supposed to guide your zoning decisions. The applicant argued that on this particular criteria, that the public doesn't gain by preserving the industrial zoning. Well, that is incredible. You know, back on December sixth, there was a presentation by the Carney Area Development Council to this very board. And minutes from that meeting are interesting. The minutes from that meeting say, Donna Circe, Executive Director, Carney Area Development Council, and Carney Community Foundation Annual Reports. Donna Circe gave an annual report for the Carney Area Development Council. She said they went out to bid for infrastructure for Phase Four of the Innovation Park. Chris Shipley will be the contractor for that project. She said they plan for development to start immediately. Donna Circe said the prices of the lots are very competitively priced. She said there is a lot of interest in the lots. Donna Circe said, "As we are finishing up Innovation Park, the city and KADC have to figure out where to go next." She said, "It will have to be decided if we acquire more land or not." Why are we rezoning a piece of property that's already zoned industrial right next to the Innovation Park? And you've got the executive director telling you just last month, "Phase Four lots are competitively priced. There's a lot of interest, and the city and KADC are going to have to figure out where to go next." Why take away industrially zoned property that's right there and jam multifamily there? They don't meet that criteria. The suitability of the subject property considered under the proposed zoning classification. That's number six. Subject property, that's the subject of this zoning application, is suitable for industrial development and commercial development, just like the future land use map proposes. And I would submit to you, there's a very telling admission that they know that the property can be developed industrially. One of the uses on their plan is mini warehouses. That's a proposed industrial use on the plan, thereby giving a clear indication that the subject property can be developed in accordance with existing zoning and the future land use plan. Seven. The history of the use of the subject property considered in the context of land development in the vicinity of the property. Subject property is vacant, and when considered in the context of land development in the vicinity of the property, it's clear you have industrial uses developing to the north and northwest of the subject property. You've got a truck stop, truck car center directly east. Eighteen-wheelers use Bennett Boulevard. Bottom line, they don't meet this criteria either. We already talked about number eight. That's the comprehensive plan. I'll talk about nine and ten together because they have to do with public facilities, traffic issue. Nine is the capacity to provide adequate public services, facilities, and utilities to accommodate the proposed development. And ten is the extent to which appropriate transportation design and access is provided given the existing planned roadway capacity. Now, we've already talked a little bit about you shouldn't be mixing residential car traffic with eighteen-wheel truck traffic. But there was something else in those MoDOT emails that I wanted to bring to the board's attention. There was an email from a Paul Boenisch, Boenisch, B-O-E-N-I-S-H with MoDOT to Vernon Coke at MoDOT dated December one, 2021. And he says, "Vern, there are three parts of the Carney Crossing Traffic Impact Study that of concern. One, proposed conditions, intersection site distance, turn lane warrants, and three right-in-only entrance opposite Centerville Avenue." I want to talk about the first thing he mentioned there, intersection site distance. And here's what he said. Proposed conditions, intersection site distance. This is something that is not of concern for MoDOT because it does not involve the state system. However, you should be aware of the situation for future development of the site. It might be of concern to the city of Carney. It is in relation to the ISD, that's intersection site distance, for vehicles making a right turn out of the North Drive. The TIS suggests that an ISD at this intersection needs to be equal or greater than one-hundred-and-forty-five feet. This is because of the tight turn at the intersection of Shank Avenue and Bennett Boulevard, shown in the upper right corner of the following image. Then he's got a picture. However, the following image from Google Maps shows the likelihood that Bennett Boulevard will be extended to the east for future development. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, Mr. Pavlich confirmed that Bennett Boulevard is planned to be extended. I believe he said all the way up to Thirty-three Highway. So here's what the MoDOT guy says Bennett Boulevard gets extended. If that happens, the ISD for the right turn out of the North Drive has to be the same as the other two drives of three-hundred-and-thirty-five feet. Therefore, any extension of Bennett Boulevard requires the ISD at the North Drive be reexamined. We never heard anything about that tonight. Never heard anything about it at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, that they want you to approve their plan. Now, what's interesting is that December first email was sent to the applicant's traffic engineer the afternoon of December thirteenth. So they knew about this concern that MoDOT says Carney would be interested in knowing about, and never said a word about it at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. Didn't say a word about it here tonight. In conclusion, the application before you should be denied. It doesn't meet your review criteria. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended denial of this application, and it wasn't close. One vote in favor of a motion to approve and five against. Star Development Corporation and Robertson Properties, Inc., respectfully request that you deny this application. Thank you very much.
Anybody else wishing to speak this evening?
Robert DeLaFonte, twenty-one oh seven Hollow Log Drive here in Carney. I just had two comments. Just looking at this plan and Jim just handing out what I'm looking at. So I don't think anybody will disagree that there's one way in, one way out. Everybody's going to be going back out to ninety-two and directly to the highway. There's only one entrance there. I think at a minimum, there should be one, if not two, connections to Sam Bar to act as a release file for traffic. And then two, the area that I've got highlighted in yellow, which is going to serve as an entrance to the commercial property, should be thirty-six feet instead of twenty-eight. And the reason being, on the other, the following pages, there's some pictures from Creek Side, the townhomes, and almost everywhere you look, people parking in their driveways are blocking the sidewalk. And then there's a lot of businesses with people parking in the street as well. I think with twenty-eight feet, people walking their dogs, kids riding their bikes, aren't going to have a whole lot of room. There's not a lot of green space on this plan. There's no parks. There's nowhere to go except up and down those roads. So I think at a minimum, connections to Sam Bar, and then a widening of what I've got shown here, yellow to thirty-six from twenty-eight. That's all I've got.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Tim Harris, sixteen twenty, Mayor Bellicourt, Carney. As I listened to the applicant's presentation tonight, you would think that this proposal is the greatest thing since the internet, and it's the best location in Carney for apartments. I have no problem with the retail. I have no problem with the industrial. However, I have a real issue with apartments. Couple of things that come to mind. A lot of smart people from this board, P&amp;Z, members of the community, paid consultants, worked hard putting together a master plan for all of us to follow. It's a twenty-year plan to determine the expansion of Carney and where certain things should be. This property is zoned for industrial, and if you would move this to a residential zoning, it's clearly spot zoning. It's no different than if, I'm a developer myself, we develop a lot of retail and a lot of industrial. If I come in and want to put two-hundred thousand square feet of industrial in a residentially-zoned area of the city, I'm sure that Jim and David will run me out of City Hall. So I have a real issue with that. Beyond that, I can't think of a worse place in Carney to put apartments. Think about what's there. The truck stop's there. A lot of transient people go in and out of that truck stop from not just all over the country, from all over the world. And we hear about human trafficking and all the different things that are related to that. There's a huge network of human trafficking up and down I-35. You can read about it anywhere. You're going to put three-hundred-and-twenty units right next to a truck stop with all these transient people coming in and out? Kids playing, kids riding bicycles, the clubhouse and swimming pool right next to the truck stop? I can't think of a worse idea that we could do. It just doesn't make any sense to me. That's one of the issues I have. The applicant never talked about the pricing of these units. I pulled up their website for their park bill project. Their units over there start at a thousand seventy-nine up to nineteen-hundred and something dollars. I've heard several people here in the community say we need affordable housing for people in Carney. To me, that's not affordable housing. We still have houses in Carney that sell for two-hundred thousand dollars. Houses in Carney sell for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. You can buy a two-hundred thousand dollar house and have a payment, the same as that thousand seventy-nine payments you're paying in rent. You can buy a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar house, have a thirteen-hundred dollar payment. So people are more apt to buy, I think, in Carney than to rent, and especially with those type of rents. A good example of affordable housing, I manage, we have some lots, obviously, I think a lot of you know across the street, very nice lots. We also manage, for my granddaughter, some duplexes that we own here in town. And we actually have one right now for rent that rents for nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a month. We've had it listed on the internet for two months. We've had two calls. The biggest problem we have with our rentals here in town is we require a criminal background check, and we require a credit report. If you can't pass those two, we don't rent to you. Well, that unit's still set and empty. We can't rent it because the two applicants we've had can't pass the credit report and criminal background check. That's more of what I would say is affordable housing, and there's not a need for three-hundred-and-twenty units here in Carney. Three-hundred-and-twenty units. That's a very dense, very urban plan they're trying to squeeze into this piece of property. It just doesn't make any sense to me. In my mind, if you had fifty good rentals here in this town, you couldn't get what we call Carney people, you wouldn't sell them up in a year. So you're building three-hundred-and-twenty units. What's going to happen to the rest of these units? When they can't rent them? They mentioned, they mentioned there hasn't been any apartments built here for fifteen years. I think that's correct. There's been some senior housing built, but no real apartments. What was the last apartment project that was done fifteen years ago? Porter Ridge. Porter Ridge is fifty, fifty, fifty-two units, somewhere in there. This is three-hundred-and-twenty units. When Porter Ridge was built, Mac Porter owned it. Mac Porter did a good job managing it. It served its purpose for several years. Mac Porter sold that project to a different owner. That owner didn't manage it so well. We all know what Porter Ridge is today. Think about this. This project could be Porter Ridge on steroids. Three-hundred-and-twenty units. Three-hundred-and-twenty units with the occupancy in this, a lot of the townhomes will have two families in them because they're big. This could represent almost ten percent of your population in this town. What happens if this project goes bad? We're in trouble. Our schools are in trouble, our police, our fire, everybody's in trouble. We got a real problem. Another issue that I want to bring up, Bennett Boulevard. Bennett Boulevard is supposed to connect to Thirty-three Highway. That road should be considered. If we were in looking at this project, there should be additional right-of-way. There's going to be a lot of traffic coming through there over the years. That will be a four-lane road or five-lane at that intersection at some point. So that should be taken into consideration as well. There's just too many issues with this project to approve this, and it's spot zoned, and I, hopefully, you can find a way to deny it.
Hi, I'm Janelle Clayton with Merge My West Engineering located at two-six-six-eight West Catoka Street in Alitha, Kansas, and I did the traffic study for the development. I just wanted to address a couple of issues that I've heard, set the record straight. We were talking about the site distance issue on that North Drive. You are, it is correct that today, with the twenty-five mile an hour and a fifteen mile an hour curve, you only needed a hundred-and-forty-five feet of site distance because of the slow speed around that curve. However, if and when Bennett does get extended, you would need three-hundred-and-thirty-five feet of site distance. And that was what the MoDOT representative was trying to bring up, is that, hey, when this gets extended, you know, we will need extra site distance. It wasn't that we were deficient in site distance, and that's a common comment on or something like this, that we are considering the future condition. There's nothing in the topography out there today that has me concerned that we would be able to meet three-hundred-and-thirty-five feet of site distance. That is also something road designers are considering when they're designing the roadway extensions. So that, I don't think that's a concern at all. Also wanted to address, I kept hearing there's only one way into this development, but there is a separate dedicated right turn lane on the west side of the intersection that feeds the restaurants, the traffic there. So it is dispersed a bit coming into that commercial. Also, when I was doing turn lane warrant analysis, because there are three different driveways along Bennett, that traffic is dispersed enough that it's not triggering turn lane warrants into those driveways. So the traffic volume in itself was not concerning from a traffic engineering perspective. Also, I'd like to point out that a typical rule of thumb that traffic engineers use is an ADT, the average daily traffic of the roadway. The PMPR represents typically about ten percent of the ADT. So with these projections, our ADT would be about two thousand vehicles per day along Bennett. And a two-lane road, FHWA has documentation on this when they're talking about road diets reducing length, can handle up to ten thousand vehicles per day. So there's plenty of capacity to handle future development that might be coming down Bennett in the future there. Regarding exiting traffic, I heard the mention of, you know, maybe an extra connection to Sam Bar Road would be beneficial, but the majority, eighty percent of this traffic wants to go to the east to the interchange area and then north and south. Only twenty percent wants to go to the west. And those percentages are based on existing traffic patterns today. And so we know what the traffic is doing today, and that kind of formed our decisions on those. I just don't see a benefit of providing a connection where very few people would actually be utilizing that because everyone wants to go to the east. So just wanted to make So just wanted to make those clarifications. Thank you.
I am the owner, oh, of the tract that sits on the, I guess it would be the west side of the development next to the First Missouri Bank there. So I wanted to start off with saying I told Brian this before, that property and what they're doing right now. I think it's great. I think Carney does need something like that or like this, you know, apartments, townhomes, whatever. I think it's a great idea, and I know there's a lot of work that they put into it. I did speak with Brian, I think the last time was on December 9th. We haven't had any further communication since then. I'll just kind of leave it at that. I don't think anyone denies the needs of Carney for housing. I think it's desperately needed, but as you guys have already heard numerous times before, and I heard the traffic engineer, you know, talking about it, sometimes when you get boots on the ground, it's a little bit different with what you see. We actually serviced that Pilot Travel Stop. My company did since it was the old truck stop. And unfortunately, you know, when Pilot came in, a lot of those truckers sit there until noon, or they sleep half the day just so they don't have to deal with that roadway to get out of there. And when you have slow-moving semis going through there, you have a lot of short-patient people trying to get by those trucks. But anyways, I just wanted to make sure, my main issue that I wanted to make sure, and I did talk to David Pavlich and some other individuals on this, if it gets rezoned and it pushes up against industrial property, I don't know if that's the correct word to call it, but I think it would cause some zoning confusion. And when we try to build properties or develop or whatever, you may have individuals, you know, fighting that. So we are in the middle of our project right now, which David's going to see probably in the next 15 days, some plans come through from our engineering. But if it gets approved the way it is, I know that Brian, the attorney and David Pavlich, they've worked on it great to put the buffer in there between, you know, our project and what he's doing over there. But it will cause us to spend probably anywhere between $200,000 and $400,000 to put a facade all the way around our facility just in order to make it look nice for those townhomes. If it stays industrial, you know, we would have to abide by the industrial standards that they have over there, the rules of the city. I'm not against it, but I mean, you know, I've heard a lot of people say it's just the wrong location. I don't know much about that type of development, you know. I'd want to make sure that the developer, if they developed it, would probably hold it five to seven years and maybe not put Section 8 housing in there because I kind of agree with some of the people here, what happens when you can't occupy or stabilize that, you know, those apartments or townhomes in the period of time that you need it to be feasible, you know, or meet your performa. What do you do at that point? Got to get money somehow to make the project, you know, make it, you know, cash flow. But anyways, that's kind of what I just wanted to go over because it will cost us a significant amount of money. I'm not against it, you know, over there. I know those townhomes are pretty close to the, I guess, the west side of industrial park, that Innovation Park over there. But when Brian's attorney was talking about a buffer and residential, you know, buddying up against, what is that, the north side of that property there? You've probably got 1,000 feet. You've got the Innovation, you know, detention basin, you've got, there's no residential streets, I think, right there, but there's probably 1,000 feet, you know, in between Innovation Park and those residential houses in there. But that's pretty, that's pretty much it. I think there are properties in Carney or the surrounding areas to purchase. It just takes a little bit more work to find those and figure out which ones they are. And I know that well because, you know, storage that I'm in, it carries such a negative stigma, it's very, very tough for us to find properties. And if I can find them, I know that those, you know, other people can find, you know, properties for a project like this. But I agree with it. It's, you know, it's one of those areas I'd want to be at too, an eighth of a mile away from I-35. You know, you get a lot of visibility there. But I just want to make sure for the future that it doesn't impact current or future landowners inside of Innovation Park. And I could see in five years from now, you know, maybe causing those problems. But that was it. That's all I kind of wanted to throw out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against?
My name's Dustin Hampton. I live at 1202 Stonecrest Court here in Carney. I wanted to speak on a couple of things that I've heard from this meeting and last week's. Few things that concern me is Mrs. Vargas' comment on last week of the north property zoning meeting residential causing problems. Well, if we look at the north end of the industrial zoning, that backs right up against Mr. Robertson's of Cedarwood. So I don't see the problem. If we already have this on the north side, what's the problem on the south side? So I'm hoping that doesn't take effect of this. This week, let's see, the whole east property of Cedarwood adjoins the same zoning that this property's on too. So there's a second spot that I see that should not be a problem because we already have the same exact thing going. I just, I truthfully don't have a dog in this fight. I have supported things before. I have met Mr. Arz through this project. I don't know him. I've never worked for him. But I do know that our town desperately needs it. I have a daughter, it's a sophomore in college, and in a few years, she'll be with a degree and school debt and looking for a place to live. And I live in a rental at the moment, and I promise you, a student that just came out of college is not going to be able to afford the rent I pay, and I don't live in anything luxury. I live in a standard, what I would consider an entry-level house. And I would like to see somewhere, I got a son that's a senior in high school that doesn't plan to go to college, and I'm sure in the next several years, he's going to look and want somewhere to live away from home. And there's really nowhere to live. I remember being in his shoe 20 years ago, and I had two options for apartments that totaled 16, like 24 units is about the only options because one of the projects, I'm sorry, but I'm not going to live there. But the other ones, there's just nothing to pick from. And then the homes, I mean, almost $2,000 a month is just not sustainable for somebody fresh out of college on a normal pay. So I hope you guys will contemplate approving this. I think our town desperately needs it. I think it'll help in a lot of areas that people wanted, and I think it'd be a great investment for our community. Thanks for your time.
Mayor, this is David Pavlich. I do have an email. Can I comment?
I'll get emailed. I think there are a few other people online, so I'll make sure before I close the floor that we grab it.
Okay, thanks.
I've got people here in person.
Yeah, I couldn't see them.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board. My name's Robert Mahaffey. I live at 1102 East 15th Street here in Carney. I moved here a year ago, looking for smaller town atmosphere and really enjoyed Carney is where I landed because I looked in Liberty and it was just too busy, too packed, everything was crazy. Came here, and I've noticed over the last year even that the traffic on 92 has increased already. You add 300 more units, living conditions right in there around this truck stop. They said they were going to increase the queue area 200 to 360 feet, I think is what they said. Modern tractor trailers are 75 feet in length. I'm a tractor trailer driver myself, so I come with a little information on that side of it. You're going to get four trucks per lane on that turn lane because they're 75 feet each. So you're not going to be able to queue a whole lot of trucks to leave that particular area. And then you add 300 people trying to leave to go to work also. I see it every day that people get very, very impatient with trucks. They, I see them go through this, the right lane they're talking about, that's straight or right turn only. I have seen on numerous accounts, driving around the cities, people get impatient and they cut the trucks off, they make a left turn there because they just don't want to wait. They don't have time. Everybody's too, everybody's too busy. Nobody has the patience. These trucks do not take off very fast anymore. Most of the tractor trailers anymore are automatics. 45 seconds will get you maybe two trucks through because they don't take off very fast. I have driven an automatic, and it, by the time it's gone through the intersection, the light is changing, with just me at the front. So when you add so much traffic, one of the star developers talked about, you know, human trafficking, you're going to put a lot of kids at risk right in that area with truckers coming from all over the world, all over the country, driving through there. I'm just a concerned citizen. I do think that we need more housing, but I don't think we need it right there. It's just a bad position there for safety concerns, for families, and for businesses that are trying to, you know, get through there. The truck stop may suffer because some truck drivers will bypass it because it's too much of a hassle with all the other residential traffic trying to get out of there. They will bypass it and go down the road to an easier truck stop. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else here in person that'd like to speak for or against? Ryan, do we have anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, there is currently no one raising their hand.
Did you have anything submitted? I thought you sent me a message saying that there was a question or a comment.
Mayor, this is David Pavlich. I do have one. We received, staff received an email today. It was anonymous. They requested to remain anonymous, but they live, they're resident in Cedarwood, and I would just like to read their message to me. Their message says, "A Carney resident is concerned about traffic flow from Carney West Shopping Center, turning left onto 92 Highway, which would be into a westbound direction. With additional traffic, will become even more hazardous." Has MoDOT studied that? End of their email.
Yeah, yeah, almost definitely. Applicant will have time to address the board. Anybody else want to speak for or against?
Mr. Mayor, we did have a comment from the YouTube chat.
I've officially closed the floor. So public comment has ended this time. Any questions or discussion from the board on the applicant, from the applicant, rather? Yeah, any questions or items of discussion for the applicant?
I have some concerns. You know, we've talked about Bennett Boulevard all along, all night, and nowhere on this plan do I see any sidewalks along Bennett Boulevard. We require developers to put sidewalks in front of their houses, behind their houses if they're a double-faced lot. I don't see, and maybe I'm missing it, and if I am, I apologize, but I'm not seeing any kind of sidewalks along Bennett Boulevard. You know, people walking, you know, there's a lot of people in this apartment complex. If these commercial spaces up front are restaurants, you know, these people in this development are going to, they're going to get there one way or the other, but some of them may try to walk down Bennett Boulevard, and with all the traffic, somebody is there. That's one concern of mine would be sidewalks along Bennett Boulevard. Make our other developers do that. I am concerned about the density. I don't think anybody here would argue the fact that we need multifamily housing. Carney's needed multifamily for a long time. So I don't think anybody's going to argue the fact that we need multifamily. We need some apartments. Because quite frankly, there's really not much to choose from in Carney. And one question I would have for the developer is, if he's going to own this property, or is he going to sell these, is he going to build this and then sell it to an investor? That's actually fairly common to build out this type stuff and then sell it to a developer maybe off the west coast or about anywhere. But, you know, I firmly believe that a developer that's invested in it and is maintaining ownership makes a better developer, or makes a better investor in Carney. So that would be a question that I'd have for the developer is, is he going to maintain ownership of these? And if so, how long? You know, are we going to own these for a year? Are we going to own these for five years? So those are some of my major concerns.
Any other questions or discussion from the board? And then I'll give the applicant opportunity to answer the board's questions.
Just wanted to quickly clarify some past things and then address Alderman and Lehman's concerns. I think there was a picture of a product in Parkville. Those are with, Parkville had 25-foot setbacks, not 30, so I just wanted to clear that out. We do follow the Fair Housing Act when it comes to renting to people. So not all renters are criminals. So we just want to, or unsavory characters or whatever that is. You know, I sat up here in December planning and zoning, and I said, "We'll build it as warranted." This isn't 312 units in six months. This is, the market will determine how fast this project goes. I think the townhomes grow faster. That's a more, in past projects, the townhomes just always absorb faster. So I think that's where we'll be on that. We'll do the clubhouse and pool first as the amenities. You know, it's always, you don't ever want to be the developer that says the pool's coming and the sign falls down at the time the last house is up. But it's our marketing. It's a marketing piece. It's our sales office, so that you'll see that go off the bat. And then the buildings are 24 units apiece. We probably see three buildings start, and then as that progresses, we'll do one or two more at a time. You know, there's a reason there's a density. And it's not cheap to build these things. But our density is below what your zoning allows. And I stood up here in December and planning and zoning, and I said, "I am going to be the ownership of this." You know, I don't live in Carney, but I got a lot of family that lives on my house, works at Carney, I got a lot of friends in Carney. And one of them today said, "If I screwed up their drive to Price Chopper, I'd answer to them." So, I mean, it's, it's, you know, every community I've gone through, I don't have them here, but I hope we left a lasting impression and not a bad impression in cities' mouths. I think we do what's right. I think we put out a good product, and I know we'll do that for the city of Carney. Oh, sidewalks, we do have sidewalks on both sides, at Bennett and along 92, so.
Okay. There are another questions or discussions from the board? Read the ordinance by Todd Holme for the first reading.
Mr. Mayor, before we go, I will be recusing myself of vote for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the time-
Mr. Mayor, the title of the ordinance is, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 400 of the Municipal Code to Comprehensive Zoning Regulations of Carney, Missouri, Rezoning 31.75 Acres from C, General Commercial District, and M, Industrial District, to CP, General Commercial Plan District, RP 3, Medium Density Residential Plan District, and RP 4, High Density Residential Plan District with Concept Plan for Carney Crossing."
And a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading? Nobody move? Motion automatically fails. Is that, I mean, we have to put it to vote?
Put it to vote. Mr. Mayor, it has to be, somebody has to second that motion.
There was no movement to put it to vote, so that's about that. We'll move on to the next item of discussion under public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, a second public hearing has been scheduled for this evening to consider an, excuse me, to consider a, a public hearing for water rate increases, 2% increase on water, 3% increase on sewer. This was presented and with the adoption of the fiscal '22 budget. So, it's been slow coming to use, simply we thought we'd get some COVID out of the way, but it's coming back at us. Anyway, the last rate increase was October 2020, and it was a 5% increase on both water and sewer rates. This is for 2% on water and 3% on sewer. In 2017, Larkin, Lamprey, Nielsen conducted a water and sewer rate study to evaluate revenues and operational expenses with the focus on future capital improvements for the water and sewer systems. We've undertaken some of those improvements. We intend to continue to pursue those improvements, and the study is submitted as evidence to substantiate the need for these increases as the, the study did contemplate rate increases over a period of five years. Below is a chart that's enclosed in the agenda packet that, in my notes, that shows the old rates, you know, new rates. It comes down to approximately a $5 per month increase on, on water and sewer total that would be charged on an average 5,000 gallon bill. So, if you know what your average usage is, if it's above 5,000 or below 5,000, you can contemplate that being proportionally what, what your increase would be. Schedule our public hearing for both water and sewer. Statutes require that, that a public hearing be held for the, for sewer specifically. And would, again, ask for approval of these rates. Proposed ordinance has been closed in the agenda packet.
So, before I open the floor for public input, comments on this, you may have mentioned this, and I'm sorry, this is based off of the same study, the last couple increases. That reverence the same need?
We've actually, we've actually not lived up to the recommendations. We, we did live up to the recommendations of the first year. We actually delayed the, the, any rate increase after that, and these are somewhat less than that. But this, this rate increase certainly falls into the, into the category of inflation-fighting kind of a, kind of a mode that we have to raise our rates on a regular basis in order to meet our financial obligations for the capital improvements, namely, the improvements that we had undertaken, we're trying to undertake right now at the, at the plant, but the large increase was based for the sewer headworks project. And so, we have coverage with that, but we need to keep, keep up with our rates where they're in a position that we don't get behind it at all.
Then, at this time, I'll open the floor for the public hearing for the 2% water and 3% sewer, the proposed 2% water and 3% sewer rate increase. How do you want to speak for or against the proposed ordinance? Have you stepped forward, speak your name and address for the record? Floor open? Do we have anybody online wishing to speak, Ryan, on this topic?
Sir, we do not currently have any hands raised.
Any movement? Close the floor for public input and comment. Any questions or discussion on this from the board? Can you read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 1434-2020 and the City Code Section 700 and Section 720 of the City of Carney prescribing the amount to be charged customers for water and sewer services.
Move to approve on first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 1434-2020 and the City Code Section 700 and Section 720 of the City of Carney prescribing the amount to be charged customers for water and sewer services.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Alderman Lehman.
Aye.
Alderman Barker.
Aye.
Voice unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
We have no old business to discuss this evening and no new business, so we'll launch the Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
I have to concur with what was said numerous times this evening. We do need more apartments, townhomes, and duplexes in our community. This just was not quite the right fit. There were too many issues to be addressed. So, I do hope that we will see some of these in some different areas.
Thank you. Alderman Holt?
I would like to address my abstaining from voting. There was a letter sent to the city from Mr. Rowe, Mr. Harris's attorney, accusing me of conflict of interest. It's actually not a conflict of interest. I had a right to speak with Mr. Mertz about meeting a need that we've had for a long time of having multifamily here. I am not a commercial loan officer. I would have no benefit to this. This project is much too big for our bank to handle, so it would not be coming to our bank. The whole purpose of meeting with Mr. Mertz was to try to get a developer to come here. In doing so, I brought him six or seven different pieces of property, said, "Hey, I'd like for you to check out Carney." And the letter that Mr. Rowe has is that I was somehow, I guess, working with Mr. Barr or whatever on that particular site. That is not true. I didn't know where he was going to come. I just wanted him to come and build us some multifamily housing. I had spoke with Mr. Harris on this, and he didn't seem to be interested. I spoke with Mr. Porter about it, and Mr. Porter wasn't interested in doing multifamily either. And I knew Mr. Mertz did multifamily, and so I spoke with him, and he was interested. He looked at Carney and saw that it was a growing community. However, the claims of conflict of interest, I probably could have voted on it, but the bottom line is, I don't see a conflict. There was no conflict of financial gain. There was no conflict other than the fact that I was trying to be an alderman, representing our, our community, selling our community to other developers and builders, and to help our community be the best that it is. Since I've been on this board, I've been hearing that we need multifamily housing. I've been hearing it since 2008. Well, I seen an opportunity to try to do something about it. And so, I reached out to a developer. Fortunately, it didn't work out. But I want to be honest upfront that there was no conflict of interest, and there was no underhandedness. It was just a matter of trying to get some housing here for our community and meet the needs of, of the people that are here that we represent.
Alderman Lehman?
You know, my, my fellow aldermen have talked about it already. We, we do need multifamily. We do need apartments. You know, I, I have, I have family members that would, would love to move back to Carney. But they, they don't, at this stage in their life, they don't want to own a home. They don't want to maintain a yard. They want something that they can come in, they can, they can lay their head down on a pillow, and, and they can be there, and, and they can go to work the next day and not have to worry about the maintenance that's associated with homeownership. And, and so, yes, we need, we need single fam, or we need multifamily. We need apartments. I just, you know, had this been in another location, I don't, I don't think the vote, I don't think either, either instance would have gone the way it did. And I hope that this isn't, this doesn't send a message to any other developers that were closed off to multifamily because we're not. We, we need multifamily, and so, we just, we just need it in, in the appropriate locations, so.
Alderman Barker?
I have been involved with planning and zoning for more than 20 years. I have been on this floor for about three years. Hands down, this is the most difficult decision that I've had to make in that 20 years. I firmly believe that this community needs multifamily. We need a diversity of housing options for all of the reasons that people have already shared. We need to have housing for those people who don't want to own houses in, at this point in their life, who can't afford to live in $500,000 houses, who are just starting out. I, not being able to support this project, it's like, I can't even tell you how much sleep I've lost, lost over this. But it came, for me, it came down to a matter of public safety, and is it, is it safe to have all of this traffic coming out on one street? Is it safe to build houses next to truck stops? I mean, that's what it came down to, and in the long run, that, that had to be my first priority was whether or not this was the right project in that space, and if we could, if the city could provide enough public safety for the people who are going to live there. So, I hate that I can't vote. I couldn't vote for it. I, I can't even tell you how badly I hate it. But I hope that in the near future, we have someone bring project, a project like this somewhere where we can, and I'll be the first one to support it. I will. So, I, again, I hate, I hate the way this turned out.
All right. That concludes our Alderman discussion. Could we have a motion, motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Barker, everybody have a good evening. Thank you.